Which leads us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any more chance, 30 minutes allowed, please?
Okay, second.
Can you addition the directions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same side, no carry. We have approval of the agenda. We'll add Kristen to unfinished business. AED, et cetera. Anything else? Do you have a motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same side, no carry. Visitors in delegation. Anyone who would address the commission at this time?
Well, hi, Tom Ryan with the Lakewood Law Commission Center. I just recognized that the last meeting had quite a bit of jail discussion, and I just wanted you to know I was paying attention. And so, if there's any questions or concerns anybody would want to ask of me, I wanted to just be present. Otherwise, we have our board meeting tomorrow morning, but we'll be taking care of our usual business. But I welcome any questions or concerns anybody might have, Michelle.
Tom, I do. I think that they're probably trying to get the numbers up a little bit. I see the state is farming 200 people out every month. And I think if my memory serves me right, if we had 10 more people in, that would have come to almost $225,000 to $250,000 a year, if we could get 10 of those people. And I think, if I recall right, they have to be able to pass some kind of a test where they had their addiction counseling or something like that. But I think some of them deny that. And I think some of them have already passed that. And if those people are the ones that are, any of those people are the ones that are getting passed on to Colorado or wherever they're sending them, see if you can get those guys here. Because if you have 10, if you have 20 more, if you average 80, then what do you have to get, like 90 to break even, is it break even now?
At full strapping levels, it's about 90, slightly over 90.
And I think, if I recall right, we could get about 112, 115 in there?
Yeah, we don't really want to be there. Our capacity is 108, so things get, there's other problems that come up when you get that full.
Yeah, so...
But to answer your question, I was on the phone today with Steve Engen and working on that particular issue. We've also added contracts with a number of other counties in the state that we provide beds for. The numbers are down, generally speaking, across the state. But I am interested in folks from our region who may have either completed the programming that's required in the DSCR or who have refused and are maybe toward the end last year or less of their sentence, trying to get more business from that. So, we're always trying to keep the beds as full as we can. All we can do is invite our neighbors and partners to house their folks here. And, you know, we don't control the front door. Law enforcement and criminal activity and criminal prosecutions really control the front door. So, we do our best with our partnerships. But I agree with you, it's a constant effort. We also, though, can, when we're down like this right now, reduce our staff on night shift and do so safely and legally and cut back on some shifts during the day as well to reduce our expenditures with employees, which is where our biggest expenses are. So, we're really aware of it, just coming into a new year. We are ending last year in the black in all aspects of the Law Enforcement Center. A good, solid year. And, yeah, always striving to keep the numbers up. So, I think your concerns are appropriate, and we'll continue to work on that.
And I just wanted to talk about, just for the benefit of everybody, so...
Sure, that's good, I appreciate it.
And the RRC, I mean, if a guy could possibly figure out how to expand that, I think that's the cash call that we have on hand right now.
That's another thing that's on our table as a board. They are keeping full, and the trend is toward increased use of that. Even the local courts are using that more as a sentencing alternative. So, I very much support that idea. And I think that it would be a wise decision moving forward. It'll just take some discussion and some time and planning, but, yeah.
Thanks for stopping by.
Yeah, thank you, thanks for your questions.
I guess, Tom, what I brought up at the last meeting, I guess I'm pretty disgusted in the overall picture in the state as far as funding law enforcement centers. We pretty much rely on real estate taxes. And I see no reason that there can't be some sales tax from the state, which have to come down that way. It would help fund these law enforcement centers throughout the state. They shouldn't be the burden of the real estate taxes.
Good point.
Solely. I mean, I mean, we could pass a whole rural charter in this county and it collects sales tax.
And I think we could and should work with our legislators on those issues. We had some conversations we did with people about it. But I've had the opportunity to meet a number of our other representatives and legislators, and I think that we need to work with them toward that end. That's one of probably several good ideas.
That's the thing I'm disgusted about is the mechanism of funding these law enforcement centers. And it's been real estate taxes forever. And I see no reason why we have to rely on real estate taxes, you know, to fund all of them, you know, 100%.
Well, I welcome ideas like that, and many others I really do.
And I guess that's why I'm trying to initiate something to get the legislators involved for our next session in next January.
Excellent, well, I will have my full cooperation given to you guys and your support and whatever energy you need me to direct in that way.
But I'll try to repeat myself tomorrow.
Okay. I'll go there for a quick...
I won't carry the ball if I get to work. Thank you for coming up.
Thanks, folks. Have a nice evening, okay?
Thank you.
We have about 30 minutes. Should we do the bill to the city of Devil's Lake and the West Endite? Can you find it there?
These are the leg stations and stuff that...
Yep.
That's basically for the plate.
Yep.
Only the most important that pay the bill.
I'll say.
And the discussion, looks like they're pretty low.
Yeah, winter time it does slow down quite a bit. In terms of the history.
And we did, we did pass a little bit of the maintenance on, for the deferred maintenance on too now, so we're seeing a little bit, we're seeing a little bit lower bill because of that too, and I think in the full maintenance, or a little depreciation out of it now, right?
That's correct. During the winter time, they don't make that part.
Wasn't it usually like $40,000?
Well, no, we budgeted $65,000 per year, and we get billed quarterly.
Oh, that's accurate.
So, it's anywhere between $10,000 to $15,000 per quarter.
I'm thinking that, I'm thinking that when they...
Oh, when we first...
When they first did it, and they had the temporary depreciation on the ones.
But we have that built up, so...
Yep.
Is there any other discussion? Roll call? Olsen?
Aye.
Brown? Leibon?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Exler?
Aye.
We got two letters of transfer we could cover.
Motion to approve.
You got it?
Okay.
We have a second to approve the transfers for, from county human service to the social services.
Aye.
And the general fund to the emergency management fund. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same side. Motion carries. I guess you'll take a deep breath, and it should be 6:40.
Before that, we'd be 5:40.
We're 5:40.
Lot's going really quick, yeah. I'm waiting to type one bill that it's 6:40. Okay. We are selling a parcel of land, lot 1, block 2 of the Charmy Brothers subdivision in Creel Township. Will be sold to the highest bidder, but not for a sum less than the minimum sale price of $111. Anyone interested in bidding on that?
I am.
Okay.
I'll give the $111.
Okay. Is there any other interest in the sale of this parcel of land? Has everybody had a chance to look at where it's at? Okay. Go on.
I just need a motion.
I'll move to approve the same.
Sorry. That's okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good for him.
Oppose the same side? Now it's sold, yep.
They're out there now, it's a little...
Thank you. Does he need to go a...
He'll come back tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And we all know what the advertising is doing. And it will include the advertising.
All right.
Thank you.
Ah, should we move on to the cabinet?
I got a mirror, if somebody lost a door under me, I'm gonna play with it.
Okay, let's move, let's move on to unfinished business then, and we'll continue to progress down the road. Lakewood and search and rescue building bids. Steve, can you update us on what you know?
Okay, after the last meeting, I know we wanted to, some of the subsidiary esem things figured out, but I was on the phone right after the meeting trying to get numbers in writing, or like the dirt work and the electric shins and plumbing and those kind of things. That didn't happen. They had an issue, evidently this person they're dealing with, Midland is the one doing the dirt work. They don't dirty. So, it's, the gentleman that they were dealing with has been doctoring all the town, so they had a little tough time getting ahold of them in person to put something in writing. But, basically, he said it's, everything that they're gonna bill out will be materials and fuel for whatever we need. That includes hooking up to the sewer, running all the water lines, hooking them all up, writing to the site, and then whatever worked out in the channel, it would just be fuel and materials for the pipe and so forth. So, I, but I don't have that in writing. They weren't able to do that. I was on the phone again this morning, wanted, we had two weeks to do this, but it didn't happen, so... We did put out a quote for electrical work, and I think the only one they got to do anything with it was Lakewood Electric, and we haven't heard back from them yet either. But I don't expect that to be a major amount either, 'cause it's just running some conduit through the wires and, I don't know what they're, I don't have a number to give you, but plumbing wise, most of us, the rescue workers, have done enough of that, so setting the toilets, setting the sinks, they can do all that themselves. So, the only plumbing cost we should have is hooking up the actual in-floor heating to the manifold to the boiler. So, that should be also on that, so I can't, I haven't, nobody's gotten back to us. They're either busy or they haven't gotten back to us with a number yet, but... I don't feel that they're, I think they're not gonna be too out of line of what we're expecting. But I'd say I don't have a number to give you, I'm sorry, but... And that's kind of where we were with the bid at the last time we had the bid for the building, which I did call Mr. Gleason, and he said it's an ABC Steel building. I know that was one of the questions that was, so that was the manufacturer of the steel building that he was getting using. And, I guess, we're constantly trying to work with these people, like the plumbers and the electric, you know, trying to entice them to donate further services to the cause for search and rescue. And we're having some success, but I don't know how much. It's hard to put a number on it. But we are striving to keep the costs as low as possible again. But I know like, it would be really nice to have a bid awarded, so we can at least get on the construction schedule for, you know, for Gleason Construction, since he's the low bidder. So, we can at least get on his calendar, and then once we get into the bid award, and then we can start to finalize these things with the contract. Once we sign the contract with him for completion of the, but at least we can get into his, his work support schedule coming up in March, April, May, whenever they start. And we don't get pushed back behind some other projects. If there are any questions, I mean, I know what else I, I was on the phone Thursday and Friday last week trying to get these numbers again this morning, and it just didn't work out, so...
Steve has contacted me several times, and I kind of understand where, where the, I do understand where they're coming from on the wiring and the plumbing. Because if you go out there and you ask for a bid, you're set, that's it. He's trying to keep costs as low as he can, and I understand where he's going with that. And I feel confident that he's working to find the lowest.
Well, with the electrical, for example, it's gonna be running conduit up the sides of the walls, some wire, you know, door openers, lighting, and outlets, and switches. And that's basically, and then we'll have to buy the electrical panel, you know, the panel plus the wiring into that. Because that's the expense we're gonna, to run into with electrical, which is, shouldn't be too major. It's a wide open building, so they won't have to go in around anything. Just going up the side and...
But if you're, if the electricians are looking for some help, then you got guys that'll pull wire and do all that work. And that, that's why I think we're not getting a response back.
Well, as I said, I, we called, you know, they were still working on the quote. They called it a quote, not a bid, so we didn't have to get stuck into the bidding process of putting out for bids yet. I think once that time comes, that's up to the, decide if we're gonna do that or not. But like I said, we're still working with, you know, our providers, trying to see if they would work a little more favorable for the county's position of who's footing this bill at this point.
Everybody's just super busy right now, too.
And they are, and I...
Everybody's working.
They are, they're, they're working on all the plans, and, but, you know, I just apologize for not having the numbers for you tonight, but I was, I didn't know what else to do.
How much has been donated to search and rescue at this point in cash donations?
The last I heard was $48,000, and I think it's a little higher than that because there's a couple other donations that came in, but it's right around that number. You know, so that's something that we also have to, for our, that's strictly put aside for the billing portion of this. So, we do have a little extra funding there to...
Well, yeah, that's why I asked you, because, I mean, we budgeted $400,000, and then both the bids came in at what, $375 and $360?
$340, $346 and $367, I think.
I mean, so we're, we're under budget there, under the $400,000 for sure. And if, you know, the plumbing and the electrical and all that, we've got $48,000 of donated money there too, that'll cover part of that. If we do hit that $400,000 for some reason, which we shouldn't get that high off of just doing a little plumbing and electrical.
That's what I'm trying to say, it's, the stuff they're gonna do is not gonna be difficult or a large magnitude amount of it, it's just, you know, we're, you know, it's, it shouldn't be that high of a bill, I don't...
No, I don't foresee it either, but...
Well, I think, I think a lot of the contractors that we're talking with have indicated donating time. And it, it's very difficult to put a monetary figure on that. And, and it's very difficult to wait to do it until you can get a monetary figure on that. So, it's, we're kind of in a difficult situation here of whether we should have awarded this bid. But I think that, I, I can't conceive how, if we awarded the bid at $346,000, and then we had 400 to work with, and we have $48,000 in donations already, that the wiring, the plumbing, the dirt work, and even a, even an apron, a slab would run, you know...
See, at this point, we've cut this just to base of the sort of building and the footings. We've taken off the slab in the front, we've taken off anything else, other than just getting the, we want the building up and going. And we'll deal with the rest depending on where everything comes into play once we get the building up and going. And if we have a little extra, put a slab out front for a driveway, fine. If we don't, we'll deal with it. But I guess my concern is just getting the building up and having it housed somewhere, if we're out.
In talking with Gleason, that the building that he puts up spec-wise is the same gauge deal, same rough load, everything quality standards comparatively to the other banks.
Yes, and he has, and he has to comply with the city, then we'll play building code.
So, that was one of the main questions we had, is just to make sure we're comparing apples to apples on the quality of the building.
One question, Steve. Did Gleason mention a building that he put up that's similar?
He did, but I never remember, and I didn't write it down, that's why, I apologize.
You don't know what city you're on?
You know, maybe? He's done a lot of it, he's... He's done a lot of it, but I don't know if he's actually... He's evidently done this before.
Oh, he's done it, yeah.
He's done like a farm shop, things like that, I mean, it's, it's gonna be similar scope to that.
But I don't know exactly what building that he might have put up.
Oh, he built churches and...
Well, yeah, he's...
I don't, I'm not sure, I just called him after, I guess.
No, I'm sorry.
It's not a matter of question if he can handle it, it's a matter of, is it, are you comparing apples to apples on the building?
And I think we are, though.
Yeah. Building codes, the city building codes are typically a minimum, yeah.
I'll make the motion that we award the bid for $346,000, some odd dollars to Gleason Construction.
A second. Just a comment. Don't cut corners on the slab. See what you can do to get that heat in the floor.
What we cut corners on was the perp stuff. You know, we took off the front slab, which is just a driveway outside. When you took that out, everything inside, and it was gonna, that's, you know, we did take out some of the wood doors or the wood walls, because we did, we got a storm, we saved a lot of them. Same thing with, but we want the building, well, the city, that was like very specific about how it has to be engineered, and they have applied engineering documents that it's gonna be, the slab has to be so thick and non-spectif, and...
And that, that...
We're not cutting any corners after.
That $346 bid had the in-floor heat and all that stuff. It was just to give an alternate bid at that point, so if we had to subtract something, but, yeah.
And that is kind of in our plan, is to put a secondary furnace in there, like maybe a forced air as a backup or a quick heat up something. So, but that's, we kind of took that out for now, but, again, that's, we're talking minimal cost, I mean, to put it in there.
Try to use enough foresight to know where your offices are gonna be and stuff like that, so you can zone that separately and get the boiler working separately on that part.
That's not, you know, we're gonna have three separate zones, and, you know, if they have a heating, only this zone needs to be turned up to heat up the other ornament, and, you know, so that's already been pretty much laid out, and we have a wood print, basically, for harness, but, of course, we have to get that up for the dirt guys to put it all in prior to, you know, it's what all comes out in the right spot, so...
Yep. You think it'll be all right, Mark?
Yeah, I do. I feel real confident that they have done the diligence. You know, a great example is, you know, we kind of stepped outside and inquired about an architect and et cetera, et cetera, and, you know, they said we couldn't build this building for, is it $700,000?
$600,000, some thousand dollars.
So, I mean, that's what we had. No, we're not, but, but, you know, they said we couldn't build the building for that, so... I, I think Steve has done a very good job on chasing this all down.
But I think we need to get on the, on the building part of the...
Yeah, we got a motion in a second.
Yeah, I'm pretty worried about this. I felt so bad about having those numbers today, just like that. It's kind of out of my control, but...
We'll deal with it, we'll deal with it.
And I think we can be well within our means to do it done, so...
Can you tell me, I just see some old paperwork on my desk here, but are you a 501(c)(3)? I mean, can't you get tax exempt?
No.
You can't get tax exempt?
We're not 501(c)(3). And they, we debated the cost of the, of the time to do that, but it gets rather expensive.
Okay.
You have to hire a jury and...
We got one right here.
I think that's a little more, I think that's a little more involved timeline than what a lot of it is, but we're working on something with, they have, you know, first they have L.B. on their team. So, he's, we've discussed it with him, and we're, we're still wrangling with if we're gonna go that route or not, but... Also, just to let you know, we are still actively pursuing as many grants and foundation things that we can for funding. It's just they take some time to develop, and of course, once we get, if we get any awards that way, first we'll go back here. We're still pursuing actively, like the Bramble Foundation and a couple of them through the state, plus we've had a couple from the Farm Bureau and...
I keep my eye open.
Yeah, so we're still actively pursuing any, any, any grant opportunities that come up, so...
I think with this action today, you'll really be able to go after grants and...
Yep, we got a specific amount, I'll have to say.
You know, they know it's in the works, it's gonna start...
Here's what it's gonna take, and we're gonna work a bit.
All the match money you need for, to, to have, need to help, right, always?
Well, and the point is now it gets back in the media, get the, you know, the awareness out there that we're, now we're moving forward, and we still need some help, so...
Yep, good point.
Yeah, with the site again, with the site being advertised and the, and the awarding the bid, you know, they all know it's a reality and...
And it's kind of dying the public right now, it hasn't been a hot topic, but...
Right.
You know, all we need is a couple of these people out there deciding you wanna drive their trucks, so this then I can go through, and we'll be right back in the front page again.
Well, let's not, well, let's hope that they don't.
I hope they don't either, but, you know...
I know what you mean.
We'd rather do it this way, so...
So, I have a motion in a second on the floor to approve the bid to Gleason Construction for $34,565. Is that what it is?
Yes.
On the mic.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please. Burns?
Aye.
Leibon?
Aye.
Olsen?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
I say. Aye. Now I would entertain a motion to put the funding in place to fund this.
I'll make a motion in a second. The ballot is meant to go to the bank's given financing place.
We have a motion in a second to put the financing in place on the road. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same side. Motion carries. Kristen?
Anything else, please?
I don't think so. I just have one question.
Thank you.
You guys want me to ask the bank?
Are $400,000 or $346,565?
Welcome to my role, 'cause you're right there, everybody's a question.
I think we could ask for like $400?
Well, you could ask for a line of credit after that certain point, and allow all what you need.
Yeah.
That's how I would expect it to happen.
That's a good one, I think.
So, if there is a, you know, there are change orders, sometimes costs over, but with that buffer, we should be okay, but if there's just to have it available, just in case.
I should make a paper code name for what we do in the budget, anyway.
Okay, okay. So, that's okay if I just said, prove that in the motion?
Yep, that's fine.
I have a very short sprint compared to the rest of them. I was asked by the National Guard to come out and do a presentation for their LNO training, which is their liaison officer training. In any disaster, there is an individual from the National Guard that comes and sits at any given EOC, and they act as the buffer or the go-between between the emergency manager and that team through the National Guard and the Department of Emergency Services. So, I was quite honored, and they did give me a certificate of appreciation to come out there and do, it was about an hour, hour and a half presentation, and then just very casual questions to ask back and forth. So, I was going next, I did that at the beginning of this month, I believe it was the 6th of January. And then, another thing that came to my attention was, we had been talking about purchasing an AED for the memorial building. Well, CHI, Mercent Hospital, had contacted me about eight business days or so ago, and they had a grant that they had come into, and they award certain businesses, high-traffic businesses, first responding agency businesses, AEDs for their area. And they asked if we wanted one, and I said, "Well, yes, we do." So, all in all, I saved, or we saved the taxpayers in Ramsey County roughly $1,800. We were gonna get this in. It is a Zoll brand AED, good brand, I carry those as well. They all function virtually the same... They all function virtually the same. We'll put it up, it'll come with a mount box. Roger has so kindly offered to mount that in the memorial building. Right there in the main hall, the cell hall. We'll put that there. I do the maintenance on it. I did have it signed. I have to do monthly checks for them for their certain term period. And then after the five years, or excuse me, three years of their term, it's ours, we own it, we just do the maintenance. And then when the batteries and pads expire, that will be up to us, just like the rest of our A E Ds to maintain and purchase new ones. And speaking which, the pads and the batteries that we have in our current A E Ds expire in roughly eighteen months, just heads up. I'll order them probably six months or so before, before they are no good to us, so. And maybe at that time, there will be a credit line given to us, or we'll get maybe fifty or seventy-five dollars if we return them, if they offer that program at that time. So we'll see. But that's all I have.
Is there somebody that comes around and inspects those, like fire extinguisher pad?
Me. I'm the, I'm the A E D girl. I'm the one that does it.
That program through C H I, is that a, just a local program? Is it a corporate C H I?
Nope, it's, it's actually over a few different states. C H I is an organization that bought up Mercy Hospital. And they do it over, there's several cities, several hospitals, it's pretty big. I, I didn't know that they offered it, and.
So do they, who do you contact it? Who contacted you, I should say?
Her name was Kelsey. I can't think of her last name.
People up here.
From Mercy Hospital locally, yep.
Probably Kelsey, I assume.
That is, no, that's what it is.
There's a terror regimen too, the one that called.
Yep. And actually, yeah, they.
They got something, but I haven't.
They spoke to Candy first, and then Candy called me, but yeah, um, yeah, so I.
I understand.
So we should be set, oh, I did finish the inspections for the county shop. I'm gonna order four or five new first aid kits for them as well. Couple of the guys requested them, they don't have them, or the ones they did have, there's really not much to, where it was just kind of a makeshift, torn together kit, so I'm gonna do that as well. There's some money, there's some funds in the risk management budget, I'll just take that. If that sounds good. Now I'm really glad I'm not gonna make that.
Thanks, Kristen.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business. Oh, I'm sorry, board appointments. I have two letters, one for Ramsey County Reorganization and Annexation Board, and one for the County Water Board. Brian Volk is interested in the County Water Board, and Tristie Fernandez is interested in the Reorganization Annexation Board.
I'll make a motion to accept the applications for both parts.
Do you have a motion, Lizelle?
That's it for now.
I'm begging you, though.
No, I'm begging you.
Allo's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, one more on the new business. Review the letter from the North Dakota Department of Transportation.
Is this the first we're hearing? Was that the second, which wants some additional turn lanes, okay? I don't remember them ever telling us that previously. Oh, okay, because I just, I'm just gonna see that, have they, they're putting two lanes in that question, or this?
They're putting, yeah, in the two thousand sixteen.
This is new.
And as someone has pointed out, they have put out traffic counters and speed. Are they speed and traffic?
Traffic counters, several locations between, between Elk Drive and David Allen.
I did talk with Gray, and I think those traffic counters will probably be done more than just in January this year. They'll probably be done probably January, April, August. Because this is not, this is not a time of year where the traffic is heavy in places like Akron, Minnesota. You have two hundred campsites that are basically empty. They're also, you know, there's also a plan in the works from what I understand of more campsites going in out there. And there might be a lot of construction and so on going on out there throughout the summer. So I requested that they not do just one in January. Like I said, it makes about as much sense as following a mailman around in May when it's sixty degrees out and the sun is shining. They're really fast then.
It might be beneficial to do it at a low period of time, so you know what the high is.
That's, and that's what he said, that they will be comparisons, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that there will be comparisons then. But I thought it was nice that they got right on this, so.
Yeah, they do.
Any other comments on the letter from the Department of Transportation?
We're talking about traffic, but there's, I did have some phone calls on it.
Oh, yeah, I have too, yeah. Cut some truck tire, it was not very happy about the idea of Steve Glenn though.
That, and I had an opportunity to go to Grand Forks shortly after the meeting, we talked about it, Senator. And I did notice that where they lowered the speed limit, there's a turnoff lane on every single approach going into Grand Forks. So, I stand firm in my opinion that getting people off the road so people could get by is more important than lowering the speed limit, or just as important. So I think that it's the combination of having a turnoff lane, if they feel they have to lower the speed limit to accommodate traffic as well. I think the turnoff lanes are better mandatory for safety.
Approve liability insurance payment to Brammer Bank, or Brammer Insurance, excuse me.
Move it to the second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Aye.
Lightcon.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Icelet.
Aye. And we'll go down to approving the, the request from Lakeview Community Service. I'm never gonna have a chance to read the letter from Deb Aidall, the community services coordinator.
If you get a letter to the community services office and post it in their office, because every year we tell them they have to get that request in before the budget. And Andy was the same way. I don't know if it comes up this time of year for them, but did we budget any of these for them?
Well, Steve has it in his budget, and I did talk to him about the letter and said, Steve, did you put anything in your budget? Because I didn't get a request from, before budget, and he said, yes. He feels they're worth the four thousand dollars they requested. But I did talk to Deb Aidall, and I said, please, make an opening your calendar to send me something in June, so we can add extra into Steve's budget.
We've always concluded that it's worth it, but their timing seems to be off for the.
Right.
So if Steve has it in the budget, we don't need to address it, right?
You just need to make a motion to.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the four thousand dollar request from Lakeview Community Service. Is there a second? Any other discussion? Or you will note that, and ask her to put in a request at a later time? Okay, then we'll call on that.
Yes.
Roll call, please. Lightcon.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Brown.
Icelet.
Aye. The request is granted. Kevin, you're up.
All right. Okay, the first item there is invoice for nine quarters for the work they did on Ramsey County, eight through Lottonaire, this will be the final payment on that project to the contractor. That was basically for the retainer jump project for thirty-nine thousand fifty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. Chuck the motion, we'll take that.
I'll make a motion to pay the double number, second.
Any other discussion? Roll call. Martin's.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Lightcon.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Icelet.
Aye.
Okay, second item was the contracts for the preliminary engineering on the thin lift overlays on Ramsey County Eight. We should probably do two separate motions, but the other one is for the preliminary engineering on, for the thin lift overlay on Ramsey County Nine. I don't have those contracts in front of me, but I did look at them, and they look like they're reasonable, too, so.
For discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the thin lift overlay on Ramsey Eight.
Aye.
Is there any other discussion on that?
How many miles does that get?
Eight is five miles. Be from Ramsey Three to Ramsey Four where the gravel was so. And then I'll take care of that whole stretch of the lot.
Okay.
Okay, so, so does that take care of the possibility of upping that box culvert as well?
The box culvert isn't in there, but when we advertised for engineering, it was said that there could possibly be a structure on this, but it, so. The contract we have here is just for the thin lift overlay, but if we want to add to the contract, we can, like, does that make sense?
Yes. What's, what, what's the contract state for the engineering costs?
Those thirty-two thousand.
I've asked this question before.
Thirty-three to seventy-one.
If we get this engineered, now the preliminary engineering, then it can sit on the shelf for a number of years then, correct?
Right. Yep.
Well, I just, again, I just want the flexibility, in case we have to spend our dollars on something, so.
Well, I mean, Kevin took some steps for that, for any, too. And this is the project for our federal eight dollars.
So they kind of tie together with the.
Yep, exactly.
Yeah, because we have to spend federal, we can't do that on a bridge or anything, it just has to be on an overlay or something on a federal layer, around seventeen miles.
But basically, our federal eight dollars are just about gonna cover this whole construction.
The thin lift overlay.
Right, eighty percent of it anyway.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please. Lightcon.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Brown. Martin's.
Icelet.
Aye.
Very, we always spend money like those are the commonest for you.
Got the rest of your pick.
And I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a caution to approve the contract with, for Ramsey County, all aspect of that.
And that's for thirty-eight thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty cents.
And this is part of the, I don't know, it's a house builder, it's a builder, but part of that money, or is that money, not part of it, it's all of it.
So is this Ramsey County Nine, C M C miles too as well?
Yep. It's the one that we did the total work on last fall.
So we can't, we can't take the federal eight dollars and move it to Nine?
Oh, we could, but, but this is a bigger project, and there's more different hoops to jump through, and we're jumping through the hoops on Eight. Does that make sense?
It's easier to use the federal dollars on the place you have to do less paperwork.
Yeah.
It's kind of silly, though.
And you have to pretty well spend the federal eight anyway.
I was just curious.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please. Brown.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Lightcon.
Aye.
Icelet. Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, the next item is Brent's computer, it's time to be updated. He's been working with Steve on the cost of the new one, that's just under a thousand dollars. But I thought I'd ask for a motion anyway, just in case some five dollars got added to the price.
I was gonna ask if you needed it. Clearly underneath.
I'll look.
I'll make a motion to.
Don't say the precedence that everybody started doing, huh?
No.
Any roll call on this one, Bill?
Yeah, we just, well.
Sure. Roll call, please. Brown. Olson.
Aye.
Martin's.
Aye.
Lightcon.
Aye.
Icelet. Aye.
Okay, and then the coffee machine. They probably used one.
Don't do it.
I was just gonna say, why?
It's, it's probably five or six years old, we used one, so it's, it's been around, but it's about half price of the new one, too, so.
And your counter type was used one?
Yeah, they counted it out.
Tells you how many copies the machine has made in its life, right?
Right.
How many did they?
Surrounding a hundred thousand, just over a hundred thousand.
What's the expectation of one?
Yeah, good question.
How many do you make?
We don't have a clue. Well, we probably make twenty thousand a year at the most.
Twenty thousand?
In the last five years, we've averaged twenty thousand with time, and how many team of disasters, so.
How many did you get on that one?
About two hundred and sixty thousand.
What do you want to do?
I would just get to use one, but, I mean, we don't use it that much, and we've got two or three smaller ones, if we get into a jam, we could use them, but this, you know, this is the one, the big, big.
Warranty?
Have they been covered for a while or?
Yeah, we can, we can buy a warranty program, but I probably won't buy a warranty program, because it just costs more money, I'll just pay to fix it one.
Do you trust the company or do you?
I do.
Okay. I guess, and we're leasing here.
Yeah, yeah, Kevin, you're the leasing one.
We could lease, but I mean.
What's the lease cost for what we got?
Well, I really can't tell you, because we're getting proposals now, but it would be a whole bundle. That everybody, it would be, the tax director has one in between, we have one in between, we have a main one, and then the county agent has a main one, and then Lonnie's office gets one too now. Because they bought one well back, and they had nothing but trouble, right, now you just go on our lease.
Refurbished one, and they said, you have to individually feed papers into it.
I, I wouldn't buy a used one, I, but now your leased one, that feeds it, right, the least, this last leased one, you got?
Uh, it still has issues.
Oh, it does. Did you call central business, or not, and that's?
A few times and.
How many copies do you make a year?
A lot.
We'll look at that when we're leasing, no mind.
We need to go to Kimberly.
Twenty million copies a year isn't very many.
No, we don't make a lot of copies.
No.
Well, I'm, I'm just curious about what the lease cost is, because, I mean, if you can bundle it in and put another one on for.
For the highway, yeah.
I'm just curious, I, I don't have a clue what it costs.
I don't doubt the ability, though, maybe all lease machines.
No, and no, they gave us some prices, each company that I contacted.
Yeah, he included us in on this, and it figures out to be about what this would be, probably.
For a year?
No, for like a.
Five years.
Yeah.
And they phrase the toner, all of the main nets.
So it'd be for, so it's like the cost of leasing would be comparable to the cost of buying the new one?
I used a couple.
You use.
Buying a used one, and you get a new one.
Right.
And then they, they couple repairs and everything on a leased one, okay?
Which I, I would be paying for if I bought the used.
See, to me, if you can get it for the same cost as the, as the used one, you can lease it, and they'll do the repairs and pay for the toner and everything, so.
The only thing they don't pay for is the staplers and the paper.
It doesn't work, I like that, so you do.
Staples, I mean, not the staples.
Whatever, what do you want to do, Kevin? I don't want to check into the lease thing.
Yeah, that's, do we have to have a, can you have a motion today?
Can you table it? Can you table it and check on the lease? Yep, our lease is up in March, but we're gonna try to make a decision sometime next month.
Oh, that's good, then, we got time, we have a motion, I think that's what.
I could, I could, I would gladly go in with the rest of the people leasing, I mean, I'm sure that'll help produce a package, too.
Take your table, the coffee machine and.
I'll second it.
Allo's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And a trailer.
It's regular for all our back door, the other one is virtually shot. And I got quotes, two quotes from Trail King, R D O, and Towmaster, or Trail King and his Butler, and Towmaster is R D O.
One's quite a bit lower than him, huh?
Yeah, it is.
U J money, U J golden, or not?
They probably sell it outright. They don't give us any on trade, I think we'll do better selling it, the big demand for those.
Steady, so close on.
Yeah.
You got any budget for it or whatever?
Yeah, I do, yes.
Motion to approve is lowest.
Second.
So the little bid is for eleven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars from R D O?
I don't know.
No, eighteen thousand, seven hundred and two.
That was a smaller, smaller trailer that priced.
Oh, twenty, I'm sorry, I looked at the bottom.
You want the twenty-four thousand dollars?
You want the twenty.
I want the twenty-four thousand, yeah.
Twenty-four thousand.
They want twenty-four thousand, I think.
Yes, they are.
It's just, you had a bid on here for a twenty thousand.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay. So, my mistake.
Eighteen thousand, seven.
Seven oh two eighty.
Eighteen seven oh two eighty.
And the cheap one is also local. The other we got to go pick up.
Motion for a little bit, man?
Your, is the motion in second on the floor? For a little bit, okay. Roll call? Brown? Olson?
Aye.
Liphon?
Aye.
Burton's?
Aye.
Iceman?
Aye.
My mistake, so.
Okay, five-year-old plan. Here's the marathon. Uh, basically what we do is just move projects down that were completed to the bottom of the list. So I updated everything, brought everything, projects that were completed down to the bottom, and I did update some of the cost, estimated cost. So on page one is our gravel projects, uh, next, or this year, we went on gravel that's. From Ramsey twenty-ten from State Highway West three miles, and then that'll cover all of that road. And the other project we have this year is a quarry road north of Quarry, it's like two and a half miles. And then, as you can see, the rest of them just stayed the same, the prices may have changed, I may have updated the prices, or the estimated costs is top.
You gonna have to put in a culvert up north of Quarry?
New culvert, no.
No, can, can we?
We did that already.
You just ran it to town there, not?
Yeah. Yeah, we did that.
The one that was so bad?
The follow, the follow area, okay, that's, that was done.
It's kind of on a hill.
No. That's where the culvert went.
Job, job dollars fixed those bumps instead.
Yeah.
It did, huh?
That one's on the top of the hill there, yeah.
Was the elevator?
Huh?
Did I hook?
I'm just driven through there.
You all have cattle across there, they're dead, they'll get a little, they'll go down there. I don't want one of them on hook.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that culvert just north of town, we did replace that one.
Yeah, one down the next, you know.
We gotta work on that hill stuff though.
Motion to approve the gravel part of the road plan?
Second.
Were you doing the whole road path?
No, just the gravel, so we're going one by one here?
That's fine, yeah. Either way, it doesn't matter.
Okay, well, we'll just keep going.
The second page is our, um, projects. And this year, of course, we're doing the overlay on Ramsey County nine, from Ramsey County four to the Wash County line. Estimated thirty dollars, and that's, uh, Senate bill or House bill money, can't reason straight. Also, we're doing the overlay on Ramsey County eight, from two to four, like we talked earlier. That's supposed to be ending there for twenty-five thousand. It doesn't say that, but there should have been a, a notation in there that that was the engineering portion for twenty-five thousand.
I was going to say, boy, that's cheap, huh?
Same thing right underneath.
Yeah, the next line down is probably the construction part. And if you need to know the average daily traffic counts for that road, they're down on the bottom of the page, they kind of follow, we split that project up, uh, road up, I mean. Yeah. And the rest stays the same. Move eight down to the bottom, and then, we had that split up as part, three different, or two different projects, but now we'll be back to one. Any questions there? This is the page that if you're looking for average daily traffic, you can find it on this page. Oh, you can on the gravel. Uh, anything you need to add or change as far as our projects? We didn't, I didn't add anything like as far as paving the woods or any truck route or anything like that, but. We'd have to find the funding source anyway if we want to add something.
Pretty much all the funding is spoken for our condition.
So like on smaller projects, like, uh, like I talked with you earlier, but like Ramsey, what, seven over next to Rocket, if we wanted to do like a repair there or something, that's just.
I have like, uh.
That's just your line out if you got money in the budget, you can tackle that, there could be a couple spots on that road that aren't.
There are a couple more over there.
Well, there's just a couple spots that have been, you know, that were pretty bad last spring.
We fixed a lot.
We, we fixed a few.
We did. Uh, I don't remember it all. Scott was here.
I don't remember.
You fixed.
Couple years. We fixed one last.
Where you get on that intersection from four onto seven there, right? Yeah, where you turn off the cell, you get on to seven, you go, like last spring, I went over and checked it out, and I, I got some calls on it, and the bottom of the slough is all, has fabric in, and that's, and that stays in nice shape, but then you get up out of the slough and you crest up to the hill and right upward, edges where the fabric stops and just drains some water, which is just a disaster.
Just east of four.
Yeah, there's a couple spots on the road that turn pretty tough, so we'll have to kind of keep an eye on it, hopefully, at least look and maybe touch on those.
Rest of the road is pretty good?
Uh, there's some spots that show up now, yeah.
I'll get that way very often.
Well, you know, it's, last break was bad too, for us.
Yeah, those hilltops on three and stuff like that aren't as bad as they were last year.
Well, and they could get worse too.
You want to go on that property?
Well, it's a different Schneider.
Let's see, let's see.
Mother's love.
Aye.
Yeah, it was, you go up Mark on three almost, fifty-eight, yeah, fifty-eight, that, fifty-eight three.
So, I guess, everything looks all right on that page?
Yep.
Okay, for quarter page three, is our chip seal project, and that is kind of self-explanatory, we just moved down after they're completed. This year, we're doing nine, and we've set the date up for paving on nine to be completed fairly early, and then we'll chip seal it with this program after it's paved. Does that make sense?
Yep.
And then also eight C, that new pavement, uh, that we did the last couple of years with our House Bill, Senate Bill money, we'll chip seal out also this year.
And those are both on there?
Yep.
With that, with that one?
Yep, for twenty sixteen. Any questions there? Okay, the last page, page four is our bridges. And the top one for this year is the owner of Harding Township. I just guessed the price there, estimated cost, I think I have about a hundred thousand dollars in my budget to do that, but hopefully it won't take that much. And then I also put on twenty eighteen, year twenty eighteen, that Morris Township Bridge. And right now, we're trying to get federal funding for that, I don't know if we're going to be too successful there, but. One other thing we could do there, it's going to be a struggle to get federal funding there, number one, because there's a bridge a mile east of there. It's a five-mile detour, but when, uh, when they look at funding these federal, bridges with federal dollars, that's one thing they look at, is how close the next crossing is. So that's going to be one strike against us. But so, just to keep in the back of your mind, we may have to do something there with our own dollars, like, uh, I don't know, Paul, maybe, say some of the ideas you, we were thinking on there.
Any questions, Mike? Do you have any projections that's not us?
Well, if we put a new bridge, it's going to be millions.
And what's our next alternative?
What do you have for page two?
Yeah, we've talked about, go ahead, Paul, explain this better, I can.
Well, we talked about it a little bit at the federal meeting down in Bismarck too, but, uh, you know, if the county wanted to take off the deck, get some timber deck with a, with them, pass a little overlay on it, that you could take that off, put in more stringed beams.
Steelized beams, you know, to strengthen it up that way. The problem is the beams that are in there are rusting, okay, so you got a background there.
Okay, and you can increase the capacity, let's take more beams in, there's more room for more of the piers and the abutments look pretty good that they'll sit on. You can increase, increase the capacity of the structure quite a bit, but even that.
Did we ever find out what our ton rating would be on it?
It is how they made, or would be?
Well, no, what, what it would be if, say, we put in more I beams, and then, or would we have to put in more?
Depends on how many more beams you put in, I guess you could get it to carry whatever the abutments will.
Okay, well, that's, that's my question, is what will the abutments carry, because I mean, doesn't make a lot of sense to update it, the weight under that situation unless you can get it to at least, you know, forty ton.
What do the abutments look like?
Yeah, the concrete abutments.
Head walls look this way.
They're trying to read.
And then, I, head walls and everything on the bridge look pretty good.
How old is that bridge?
I don't remember offhand, but we've got, we have the structure in inventory sheet, but I don't remember offhand, it's pretty old.
That's all.
How many guests in the sixties, guess, like a few?
That's what, that's what the chief has fixed.
What's the state's suggestion? They got any ideas?
They kind of leave it up to us, we have a really awesome free suggestion, you know?
Uh, about street tags for, uh, the price for concrete, for deck and beams, but I haven't gotten anything back from them. But if you do that, then you're, you know, those are quite a bit thick and taller, so you'd have to do the slope work around the ends too, which would increase the cost quite a bit. If you do that, then you probably have to do the safety improvements, widening the guardrails out, and it would be quite a bit more expensive to lateral.
But we think this bridge is all right for sixteen, seventeen?
Well, they dropped the ton rating down with twelve or something like that.
Fourteen, fourteen. Fourteen, yeah.
So are you going to do it in eighteen?
Well, if we get the federal dollars, it's eighteen. If we decide to spend our own money and put these new I beams, additional I beams in, then we could do it, so.
Do you know that federal highway law?
It's a fairly traveled road, I mean, I mean, there's another road to the east, and it'll be two miles, I believe it would be?
Uh, one mile over, but then there's two miles left, so.
But that, that road over to the east is not a, it's pretty close to minimum maintenance, I mean, it's, it's drivable, but it's not very.
No bridge there?
No, but there's no bridge on that one.
The next bridge is on East West Road, you'd have to come up to the north.
Yeah, you get, you get north to that Morris Bridge, and you turn east, and then you get back to that other bridge then.
Nineteen forty?
Well, you're.
Is that a pre-war?
Was built in nineteen forty?
I tell you, the abutments in.
It's kind of amazing that the abutments and the head walls are really in such good shape on the thing.
So basically, that's just kind of a heads up for now, I left the twenty-eight, ten, it was inspected.
Is that the one that Les Lindner was having?
Dean went to Dean.
Dean went.
So is that the only solution, or what are other options up to you, you said there was probably more than one option?
Well, I guess those are the three, the putting more strin, steel stringers in, and putting a timber deck back on, and putting concrete beams, or replacing structure, so that's.
The con, that, that's kind of the cost, or to the steel, I beams would be the cheapest, the concrete, the strings with raising the, the approach roads would be second, and replacing, replace structure would be the third most expensive. I don't really have any figures to that yet.
So it's just a matter of figuring out cost and determining how much capacity we're going to actually get out of it if we just do a replacement or whatever.
We're keeping, we're keeping the dollar ship abreast here, um, in preparation wise.
Uh, we haven't, uh, told them about these three options yet or anything, but once we get some dollars put together and kind of feel out where we're going to go, then we can bring up this week again. I mean, if they called me an athlete, I would definitely tell them.
Sure, and it's all in my neighborhood, so, I talked to the. He got, he gets, not, not, he's got to get some. Maybe you could get my bridge.
Little, little lottery.
But just kind of a heads up that it might be tough to get federal dollars for it, only because there's another one a mile over. So, any changes on the bridge, anything you want to add or change here? Other bridges listed below that are on currid trails, they, they aren't even maintained, they got grass growing down the middle of the road and everything, so. It's just something we keep on our list in case we have funding to build.
So how many bridges do we have then?
Um, probably close to a hundred, I, I, just under a hundred.
And we have, those have all been inspected and rated then?
Yep, all the ones that, they only expect, inspect the ones that are twenty feet and over, and we've gotten rid of all the ones that are.
Those smaller.
Right, exactly.
Well, my, my only question is, I mean, we've got a few bridges on here, but it would, would it be in our best interest to come up with a plan, so maybe those bridges that are not rated the best, maybe we start replacing one a year or something, you know, so we don't tell them, so we don't have to replace five in one year, everything kind of goes to heck on us?
Yeah, so far, the other ones that would qualify for federal funding was this one in Harding. I don't know if there was another one, there might have been no other one that we just repaired ourselves with, I don't know, maybe, I don't remember what we did to it. But right now, we've only got two that will qualify for.
Two out of all of those?
They're, so they're in good enough shape that they.
So that go by the ton rating then, is that?
It's how the sufficiency rating, and they rank the deck and the, and the concrete, and they rank, they rank a whole bunch of stuff on them.
So all the rest of the bridges we have with sufficiency rating is good enough that they won't fall under federal, federal dollars?
Replacement. And that changes from year to year too, they expect them.
Well, yeah, it depends on the highway bill and, and what the inspection.
The inspection, yeah.
Absolutely.
Do they, do they inspect bridges that are being used?
Yes, they do, they go to every.
Paul, I was just looking here, Benson lists on the first page, the gravel from churches very south, seven miles, that's going to be a zillion dollar rolls in that. I mean, there's a bridge there, there's.
That one, for instance, they don't inspect, because they need a crew with you.
Oh, they, yeah, they don't, oh, no, you can walk on that one now, yes, yeah, yeah. I was just curious if they inspect all those, you know, because there's got to be more than that one, that's the only one that I can think about, all I have.
If they can physically crawl underneath them, and, yeah, they do.
Because then they're, you know, you go north or south, and what happened, by the way, in turn, you go towards two eighty-one, there's another bridge there too. And that, you can see the, the sidewalls and everything on now, so. But my gosh, I couldn't imagine what is the cost to build those rules.
Anything else before we approve the, uh, roll call?
Motion to approve the five-year-old.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All the same sign? Motion carries.
Okay, I have two other items.
It's going to be done in twenty-two minutes.
I'll get that, yeah. Um, E G P T I, Upper Great Plains Technology Institute is doing this, uh, grit, uh, program, Geographical Roadway Inventory Toolkit, and it's for their, um, road assessment, you know, how they get the legislators to know how this road assessment. Well, anyway, there's all this information we're supposed to go online and, and enter into this toolkit. And I asked Paul if he could help me with it, and he's got the, this, a tale for the price of twenty-five hundred dollars to five thousand dollars range to complete this work. So, basically, what I have here is a small contract to do that work, to complete this Upper Great Plains study for us.
What does it entail?
Basically, we go in, we go over to the county shop, look at the, his open goal plans, Kevin has on file for grading with some install ratios and that sort of stuff. Other ones, the majority of them, you know, we've done work on since we started looking for the county back in the late nineties. We've worked on most of the paved roads already, so we have, you know, most of the background information we need. And then we go online into that grid tool and basically it's like Google Maps where you can go in and line up road section, say what, how many inches of asphalt it has with the gravel's like, what's sitting slopes are, what the shoulders are. And they, they'll use that to decide how much funding it needs, basically.
Yeah, there's a.
They're just doing the paved roads for now.
They asked for the cost of the project per mile and what year it was done and that sort of, they just passed it, the project was done.
How long do you think it would take to get that done for?
About a week, I think, about solid.
So what, so what can be a model for them to, if we get that in ready, that'd be good for us?
Yeah, well, there's like the, as far as I know, there's only one other county that's got this completed.
Do they have that in the vector?
Uh, February fifteenth.
Do you have that in your budget too?
Yeah.
Motion to approve that?
I'll say.
Okay, um, do we go all the way? Yeah, it might be five, so. Brown?
Aye.
Burns? Olson?
Aye.
Mycon?
Aye.
Well, the last one, I just got this from, that was made as our updated, uh, county federal aid program. We, we approved this, I don't remember, just first by October. And it's asking, there's federal dollars still available, they've got excellent federal dollars for projects and all the counties throughout the state didn't put in enough projects to, to spend all the money. So we're asking if we have any more projects that we would want to put into our federal aid program for twenty sixteen.
Does it specify projects, I mean, can it be anything?
Um, it has to be on the federal aid rolls again.
How much money?
How much money is it?
Uh, give me a figure, so.
What in the big world?
Well, take the first, take the first one in seventeen and turn on.
Well.
The next one on our program is paving around the county one.
Well, this, this is all money, so for this construction year then?
Yep.
For, for sixteen then?
Yeah, well, you said we're only gonna get maybe eighty percent of number eight done with our federal funds, why don't we try to at least get enough money to finish that off? Or partially part of number nine or something?
Or is there? That'd be easy to ask for.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's shovel ready, we're already, we're putting the project together, I mean, at least see if we, it doesn't hurt to see if we can get a little bit of additional funding.
Yeah, makes, makes sense.
I want to see that in cost.
Well, how much does the cost then?
I mean, how much?
I'd like to go to that.
What Adam's talking about.
Finish, to finish eight.
Okay, here's, who we got, five.
Miles?
We got, so it's a five mile project.
So where are we on?
Eight, yeah, eight's gonna be around six hundred and fifty dollars.
Yep, six hundred and twenty-five, it's the estimate on here, and then we have five hundred and five, it's federal eight dollars. So, no, one hundred and twenty-five.
How much money is available from the state stuff?
We don't know.
This top number here, we don't, it's carried over from under. It does carry over, yes.
Okay.
Do you have a estimate on how much this is?
Hundred and twenty-five dollars.
A hundred and fifty, question, probably get that.
Well, yeah, and number nine, if we're planning to get that done, it's a million dollar project, I mean, just to see if we can get additional funding.
We've already committed to, uh, House Bill, that Centerville line.
Oh, for that one, okay, oh, but, you know, at least we can try to get additional funding for eight.
Right, if, if that box zone became an issue, it would probably qualify also.
Kind of same here.
Yeah.
You should do. Paul, do you have time for the engineering that would go along with asking for that extra money?
That's a very good question.
How soon would you have?
See, there's special.
Real things. Special things we have to do for federal dollars, right? Yeah.
We haven't done those yet. So, I mean, yeah, if we need to, if we wanna like say go further on eight towards Webster. Whatever, we need, we need to get going on, put it that way. I, I guess, I, um, wish they had how much money they had available. See, and what this will do, they'd be forwarding us money, yeah, we'd be using somebody else's money, but basically we'd have to give it back to them in upcoming years.
But we already have it done, so we have it to do that.
Yeah, just so you're aware of that, so just.
Yeah, we'll take away.
It's just a loan, it's a loan from whoever's giving it up.
Right. It buys down your future years.
Yep, exactly.
Paul?
So, if Paul thinks that they have enough, faculty engineer the rest of the project and we can get that, uh, we could take care of that.
To Webster, is that what you're thinking? Well, I, I'd say get it, get whatever you can because the cost of, we're gonna be doing these roads going forward regardless. The cost of doing these roads is just gonna continue to go up, so if we can do it now, we're making for our buck at this point in time or later.
Just, just shoot them an estimate for now and see if they have enough money before you really put the money into it.
I thought the G is that your engineering done?
Yeah.
You know, these, toward engineering, over the state, they'll say, okay, they're ready, take that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so at least maybe we can get them.
We have it ready by the February meeting? That's sure.
As far as the.
That possible?
For eight.
No pressure.
I can have the numbers for the, the heckless.
That would be two weeks from today.
I can do that.
I, I.
We could figure out what.
To get all the survey work done and everything.
Yeah, well, we don't want, if we're not gonna get the money for it, we don't want to go.
Yeah, very good.
Right, but can we have the numbers for the next meeting? Okay.
We're looking for it out there.
Don't have how much money before we, you know, we'll ask for this much, if you had that, if you don't have that much money, we won't go ahead with it.
Right.
Okay, we'll plan that down.
Okay.
We'll put some, have some numbers together at the next meeting and kind of go from there.
Okay.
All right, that's all I have.
Question, have a, did, did the guys out over the weekend, uh, push the snow and stuff?
Most of the roads weren't that bad.
It seemed like the road from Southam to the Bruins, LeBones.
Or Raunds?
LeBones. Goes across past Steve Woods and out, somebody called that, oh, over the weekend. That's where it was tough and, and it was clear as a bellas, so.
I haven't seen it, so.
Just wondering if the guys will.
Okay, we'll move on to KLG and the comprehensive plan contract. Paul, you're up.
Okay, um, basically it's the same thing we presented to the, um, planning board. Um, it's a paper, it's a proposal. And just put it all in, into the contract format, just took it out of the proposal. Still not pulled over and everything?
Yep. For, have you looked at it, Larry?
What's that?
The comprehensive term?
It's been a while since I've looked at it.
Okay, there you go. And it's for forty thousand five hundred dollars?
Pretty serious.
Yes, yes. I'll make a motion to, to always sign the contract.
Any other discussion?
There was a little bit also.
Yes.
And it was what was accepted by the planning. That was paid for.
Yeah, and they tell me that was commission made a motion to accept it.
Yeah.
So we just need to sign it? Okay, and we have a motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Then we have the township assessing contracts.
Probably a motion to accept the contracts.
All of a sudden.
Okay, so we have contracts for Freshwater, Royal and Little Hoff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign? That motion carries. Uh, then we've got the senior citizen no levy payouts. Got a couple we found, one is there. And, um, the one for County of Columbia is we don't, we don't do any more because that's not going to bound Columbia by itself. Everybody catch that? A little bit less than it was last year. I'll entertain a motion to.
Motion to approve.
Who's no levy payout?
I'll say.
May for the discussion. Roll call please. Brown?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Mycon?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Hi sir. Aye. Motion carries. Uh, review of the legislative information?
I just brought that back from the North Coast Association of Communities, moving that we're in December. Just for your information and, um, just put it there. Going ahead with the food service bills and stuff like that and what their standards on them. Just for your reading.
And Betty has the dates for the two thousand sixteen, big association companies, I guess it's October ninth through the eleventh.
That was very interesting information as to how many attendees and stuff they had and the costs. Costs were way up, but, uh, they are gonna do some adjustments. And they, they still entertain any kind of comments or anything on how the bus services work for everybody, but I, I made a suggestion at the meeting that if they, at certain times, could be smaller buses, those buses, that first time we went in and out of some of those, um, motels for only two or three people on them, but they, they went steady constantly all the way through it. I think it was a tremendous effort for the association to make that move and I think it was very good conference. Uh, I'd ask for comments from everybody else who was in, I don't know if you like it.
That was great. Still prefer the old hotel.
You do? Still prefer the old hotel, but the rest of it was.
I thought it was very well done. So nice to have the exhibits of central location inside and the number was up.
I just didn't really leave because I didn't know if I was gonna find a parking place again, so I just left it there.
Yeah, the, the buses were tremendous, we didn't drive them, they were just.
Yeah, we wrote that because I, after I told him, the beast, I didn't want to move it again because I was gonna find a place to park.
Yeah, it was very good.
They also had, uh, talked about expanding the, uh, displays into that open area to get more booths, more, uh, participants from, to help pay for the.
Help vendors and stuff, yeah. From their, from their viewpoint, it, it was, it was a success. Any comments or anything that anybody wants to share with them to make it even better next year, they welcome. Just give it to Mary Turner or, or Jenny or anybody that's called in at the association.
Uh, we'll move on to discussion on the intended care and review of the bill.
We got one mail in from Steve, that's with Liberty Construction, and he works on the floor over in the State of the Deaf building. And it's for fifteen hundred and since then I talked to Ed and we've gotten a check in from the Deaf's Like Youth Activity, so I just need a motion to pay this.
I'll make a motion to pay it, in a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign? Motion carries. Everybody get a chance to review the letter from the Russian for planning council? The public hearing at the Memorial Building on February second? Grand point on housing and non-housing, can you develop a deeds for the action plan?
As the government pitches the pennies and tries to cut back on what they're forwarding through these agencies and stuff like that, it's important that the public tell them where they want to go with it, so I can, Michelle's doing the, uh, campaign, they asked me for that. Anybody who could attend would be an official, that's why I'm going to.
I'll try to get you done, so we can be there at ten. Um, any announcements? Anything on, um, anything you want to bring up on it?
Nope.
Do you want to do anything on this or the next meeting? Kevin, do you want to do anything on the federal aid, severance meeting?
Well, that's the one, I'm gonna check. Just see what money's available out there and then I'll check.
We stand as her? Thank you.